Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order for June 12th, 2019. Fellas, if you'd note that Larry is excused.
Hi, everyone. We have Megan Flaherty, our Grade Five Student Council President, Molly McDermott, the Grade Four Student Council President next year, and Summer Campbell, the Grade Five Student Council Secretary, to lead us on the pledge this evening. And they are from Memorial School. Come on up here, guys. It's okay. Whenever you're ready.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to repose it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come here, you guys. Wait, wait, one second. Megan? Molly? And Summer? Thank you so much.
Okay, motion on the minutes.
This will approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I have two changes on page four. The EISA report should read, Brown commented on the importance of mastery. That should be content mastery as opposed to culinary mastery or equestrian mastery. And then, under four-six personnel meeting, that's 6:26 at 5:00 and not 7:26. I'll give this to both.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, manifest is working around. There's only one tonight. Nomination.
We got it right here. I haven't signed it yet.
But nomination of Lauren Romano as fifth-grade teacher at Bakey.
That's a one-year position?
It is a one-year position.
This will approve.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? No resignations? That's good. And your report, sir?
My report this evening focuses on graduation. We had a wonderful graduation ceremony on Friday night. I have to say that I was, I kept my speech short and I was glad because the students outdid me by double. They were absolutely amazing. The student speeches were fantastic. And we had a nice, gorgeous evening for graduation and the ceremony ran very smoothly. And I would like to say thank you to all of our custodians and maintenance staff that took the time, everyone who helped to set everything up, and everyone who helped to tear everything down. It was quite a process. And I did also want to mention that Mr. Stack reconfigured the way that graduation was laid out and it was much, much better this year. There was a tent for the stage and a tent for the band and it was great. So I just wanted to simply say that that's a wonderful way to cap off a fantastic year at the district.
Okay, soon as you get home, you'll find it. Policy?
Policy has not met since our last meeting. We have 23 policies for review tonight. I'm happy to report that we have completed 100 percent of our revisions for this year received from the National School Board Association. Huge thanks to Assistant Principal, High School Principal Bob Dawson, Student Services Director Jody Gutterman, Council Direct, Counseling Director Heidi Levitt, Director of Academics and Professional Learning, Dr. Patty Haynes, Business Administrator Matt Angel, Athletics Director Vicki Paradegui, Nurse Karen Scanlon, and S.A.U. Office Manager Phyllis Kennedy, and Ms. Superintendent Ambrose for all of your work as well as the school board. And we should thank Attorney Will Phillips at the N.H.S.B. who has done a lot of work for us. Over the summer, we're waiting for additional revisions to review. So, thanks, everyone.
Good job done, everybody.
How many did we do?
380.
I lost count.
Over 380.
Right.
We didn't have to prove them all.
We had some long meetings.
You can discuss, we gotta keep moving.
Yep.
Keep moving.
Yep.
Oh, hockey game, hockey game. Hey, I'm trying to give you credit, Kennedy. I was only a worker bee.
Moonstram, Pam?
Ah, yeah. Student, student, yeah. Excellence in Student Achievement.
The Excellence in Student Achievement Committee met earlier this afternoon and I will give a report at our next meeting. Our next committee meeting is on September 18th at 4:45.
The Finance Committee met this afternoon, June 12th. The committee members present were Jamie Fitzpatrick and Jim Baker, plus Matt Angel. The minutes from our May 8th meeting were reviewed and approved.
Ellie was there, too.
Ellie, Ellie. Ellie, I'm sorry. Sorry, Ellie.
I wasn't quiet. You guys are funny.
Yeah, the minutes from our May 8th meeting were reviewed and approved. We reviewed the trust and revolving fund balances as of May 31st, 2019. The Special Ed Trust Fund balance was $236,909.07. The Capital Improvements Fund balance was $145,347.37. The Facilities Use Fund balance was $193,660.21. We reviewed various revenue and expense reports, including current budget reports. Total expenditures for health and dental through May 31st were $3,849,636.39. And expenditures from the general fund excluding health and dental were $23,774,562.67. We reviewed a draft of a construction plan for the middle school transition that allocates construction into three phases that will be needed to complete the separation of the middle school floor pan from the high school. This review included a discussion of estimated reconfiguration costs to be paid out of unexpended funds. Also, a discussion about the need for a reserve of unexpected funds that could offset any unanticipated costs which can occur in construction, especially when reconfiguring large areas. And we discussed the funds that are available to return to taxpayers to offset property taxes. You'll hear the details of this during the fund balance discussion. Lastly, we reviewed and approved a budget adjustment transfer from educational special transportation to an out-of-state placement residential account in the amount of $12,000. The next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for September 18th at 3:45 P.M.
And I believe that's the last one. You're up.
Personnel has a short meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
On June 26th at 5:00 P.M.
All right, so as Mr. Ambrose said, last Friday was the graduation for the class of 2019. It all went very, very well. Bridgette Abney and Ashley Fellers-Berto gave really, really wonderful speeches and I really want to wish them all luck for the next chapter in their life. We also decided on individual homecoming themes. So, for the overall homecoming theme, it's New England sports teams, as I said last time. And then, at our meeting on Monday, we decided individual themes. The seniors have Patriots, the juniors have the Bruins, the sophomores have the Red Sox, and then freshmen have the Celtics. And then, at that same meeting, Mr. Ambrose came in and talked to us to answer questions about the reorganization of the district, especially regarding extracurriculars and advanced classes. And he just answered a lot of questions and was very helpful in senses like that. Thank you.
Funny part was they picked their teams very, very quickly. It was not hard. You can see the way it rolled out, right? Seniors got to go first, they got the Patriots. It was cute. They did a great job. Took like five minutes. It was fun.
Public comment?
Hi, Cheryl Gannon from Kingston. This is getting to be a habit. At the last meeting, there was mention of the seminary and what's happened or not happened with that. I've come up here multiple times asking if the public can have an update. And as far as I know, there's not been anything public or formal in letting us know. I know you can't answer questions, but since this is at least the third time that I've brought it up, I would implore you to please put something together, an email or something to let us know what's happening with that building. It appears you're not in negotiations anymore, but if you are, can you say, "We're in negotiations"? I mean, this is critical, what we're talking about with facilities in this district. And that was just dropped like a hot potato. I know why it was dropped, but no other updates on what's happening with that building. So, I would really appreciate, and I think the public would appreciate, if we could get an update on what's going on with that building. Thank you.
Ellie, I don't know if you'd like to, but would you like to say something?
I would. I mean, it's not gonna-
She's the facilities person. On the board.
Well, I've been on this, I've represented the town of Kingston on the negotiation end of the building, of the seminary. And we did come to a roadblock in terms of ability to find the land to make a swap, to cut the deal. So, because we weren't able to cut a deal, and then I ended up on the school board, so things got a little way late here. But if you remember in my discussion last week, in my comments last week about the direction we were going to be going in, I want the superintendent, and I have asked him, but I haven't talked to my colleagues on the board yet. I do want a task force to be formed to work with administrative team members, community realtors and developers to look at not only the Sanborn Seminary property, but also the middle school. It's not just one building now, it's two. And I would like to see us have some kind of a proposal to move forward before we get to next month. It's a big order. I don't know that we can accomplish that, but we certainly are going to get a lot of the stakeholders together in the fall to deal with this problem. So, we know that, we're not going to let it lie fallow. We're not going to wait another 12 years to get something done because now we're going to have two buildings. But I have not had that discussion with my colleagues on the board, and I'm sure it's going to go, I suggested it go to facilities and then from there, form a group, a task force, if you will, to work on this project collectively for the benefit of the district.
Mr. Ambrose?
The, I'll just say this, Cheryl, because I do recognize that you've asked for information. There are two organizations that are talking, but it's very preliminary. There's nothing I can say about it at this time, except that one of them actually asked for us to get an estimate for the abatement of hazardous materials in the seminary building. And they would like that as soon as possible. It should be to them any day. We've been working on that for a little while. The second thing is, I've asked Mr. Angel to reach out to the realtors to get some preliminary information about what they view as pros and cons and issues for this process, so that that information can be shared with the facilities committee. That's all shareable information, but other than what I just said, there's nothing else to report at this time. Welcome.
But it's not a dead issue.
Not at all. We're working on it actively. Yep.
Okay. Authorization to hire summer calendar. This is something we always give the superintendent, authorization to hire, because we're not here. Do I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Now we can just, what do you got?
Oh, no, I just, Ellie had asked me a great question today because she, she had some questions about this process and how that works. And I thought of it after I spoke with you, Ellie, that the process is that I hire people and offer them contracts during the summer so that we can be staff for the fall, but the board approves all of those in the first meeting in August.
Right, well, that's, that's correct, because the superintendent nominates and the board elects the people he proposes.
Yep.
And I did think about it after we had that conversation, but I was also concerned about when in August we were going to meet, because this is not cast in concrete. In the past, we took the month of July off and then got together again in August, and usually the first meeting date. But, I mean, whatever this board has done, I'm open. As long as business is still taking place, we open up now with the end of August. It's not like we wait till after Labor Day for school to start.
We, I had given some thought to that today. We moved the 19th, we have to go seven days, to today. We just met last week, we're in there two weeks. So, because it's going to be, and usually we go from the 19th until the 21st of August. And that's a little long. So, what I was thinking, it would go from today to the first Wednesday, which I think is the third in August.
No, it's the seventh.
Because it'll be the same number of weeks, but because we moved one from next week to this week, and that also gets us in before we start school, in case there's anything the superintendent needs to say, "Oh, by the way, this weird, this ugly head."
So, come August, we go back to our first and third Wednesdays of the month.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think it's on the agenda. I'm sorry about that, because I just thought about it today.
No, it is on the agenda.
Oh, is it? I didn't see it.
Number, uh-
Oh, okay. We can talk about it then on that.
School board dates is 8.2.
Oh, okay. You want to wait and talk about it? You want to talk about it now?
We're already talking.
I'm sorry about that.
Eight o'clock, Bruins.
He and I set the agenda on Thursday and I, we didn't talk about it last Thursday.
All right, I moved that we resume our meetings on August 7th.
Is it the 7th? Is that what it is?
Wait, wait, can I just say one thing before you do that?
No. It's the 7th. It's the first Wednesday.
Oh, it is?
It's just the 7th, yeah.
I don't think she was saying no to me, but maybe she was.
No, I'm just looking at the calendar that Phyllis-
So, here's one, one thing I want you to think about, is that typically, the administrators take the last week of July and the first week of August completely off, because school's going to start. So, there's a lot of wrap-up stuff that goes on in professional development, and then we build the calendar because we know when the sequence starts back up again. So, for example, the administrators' retreat is the week before the board meeting for that reason, right? So, if there's business to bring to you. So, I would encourage you to consider the 14th, because if we need people to be here, they'll be here.
And it's still before school starts?
It's still, well, we'll still have two meetings before school starts, the 14th and the 21st. I, I don't even know what my plans are for the first week of August right now. So, I mean, you can meet without me, but I prefer to be here, right? But the first week of August is kind of a wild, I'm just saying that our past practice, Ellie, has been that we don't go until the 21st.
They're not even quiet, because-
Yeah, and I'm okay with it doing it in another meeting in August. It's not a problem. I just want to make sure that I can have people available. There really may not be a reason to meet at that point, because no one is in district at that point.
First of all, you have a motion on the floor.
Well, unless you want to amend the 7th.
I'll withdraw my motion, so that you could act on the motion to nominate people, let the superintendent nominate while we're in recess. There's a motion on the floor to authorize the superintendent to hire for the summer's calendar.
I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I jumped in and I shouldn't have.
Yes, see, I'm just in such a rush to get out tonight. Okay. Any discussion about the superintendent's nomination, yeah, authorization to nominate? All in favor? Okay.
Unanimous.
Okay. Now, Jamie, you look like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, because I don't know if you're going to jump back down to the calendar, if you're going to go back up.
I'm not sure either, because I wasn't sure whether Ellie wanted to take her motion there again.
I took my motion off the floor.
I know, but I didn't know if I-
So, keep going on your agenda. People can think about it.
Okay, that's fine with me. I was looking at you and trying to divine what you were going to do.
I'm not going to do a damn thing right now.
Okay, here we go.
Are we going to talk about that later, then?
Yes, we certainly will.
Yes.
Wow, okay. Hey, we're organized, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you didn't have to take that job, you know. Okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Professional development date, we're going to move that. That's up to you, Tom.
Oh, yeah, sure. Dr. Haynes asked me before the board approves the, or has a further discussion about the calendar later on. We approved the school year calendar, but she would like to move the professional development date to October 11th. The administrative team would like that as well, because we would like to take the whole district to a retreat and have them meet and work together as their new school-level team. So, it's a PD day without kids, right? So, we want to have the K-3 teachers meet as a team with Chris Snyder. We want to have grades four, five, and six meet with Ryan McCluskey, the Memorial Principal, and have grades seven and eight work with their administrator and Brian and the high school staff around the transition. So, we thought that it would be more beneficial to have the date on the 11th, so that we could kick off the rest of the year by laying the foundation for the year.
What's the, what's the original date that we're moving from?
It was November 8th.
November 8th.
By the way, November 8th is very, very tricky, because November only has 15 school days anyway. So, we kind of felt like this was a way to solve two problems with one situation. And in the future, Patty would like the date to be the Friday before Columbus Day instead of November.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
Okay. Motion, somebody?
Move that we author, that we change the professional development date to October 11th.
Second.
Further discussion? Are there any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay. Vicki, come on down. You're the next contestant on the Price is Right. Climbing wall.
Climbing wall. I'll be nice.
Are you climbing over the?
I'm climbing over the guided stuff. So, I'm sorry I was not be able to be here last Wednesday at your meeting when you guys discussed this. I think you have someone in the period already. And?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Answer any questions yourself, if you would have any other. The first page you already had from the first meeting, where the money's coming from, from Katie's donation to the school. The process there, when she donates the money, is the staff at the school puts out ideas, and it was consensus at Bakey that they would like this climbing wall. And you had the rationale below in the meeting last Wednesday also. The second page is the connection to the standards and grade level outcomes that you asked for.
We didn't see this last week.
Oh, you didn't? No, I thought you had it. I'm sorry.
Let me clarify. I had it to read to you to answer questions.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Vicki, we did not disseminate that.
I wasn't here. I apologize for that. So, we will go back to the first page. Basically, the top part gives you the quote for the building and the training, and then it kind of is in writing how the dimensions would be in the cafeteria at Bakey, if you've been in there before. On one end is a stage. On the other end is the wall that's all with padding on it. That would be the wall, and on the third page, you can see a picture of it. It's kind of yellow and green, how it would kind of be there in the cafeteria. The back wall-
Vicki, can I just say, that's the gym, too, though. It's a cafeteria.
Right, cafeteria gym, right.
I just want to make sure everyone understands that the-
Yeah, I think the cafeteria is also the gym and the stage. It's a multipurpose space. Thank you.
Yep.
The back wall would be what they call a bouldering or transverse wall. It would be 32 feet long and eight feet tall there. And there's, and then, as you moved to the corner, toward where the stairwell is there, there would be a piece that goes up 20 feet. You can see the board going up. It's kind of hard, I think, to visualize the picture. And then, it would go down the adjoining wall, eight feet, and go up 20 feet again. And there would be these wedges and a platform on it for kids to enhance their climb as they went up. In the 20-foot areas, they have stations for belaying, which is, kids would be in harnesses and helmets, and they would be monitored by certified people, adults, that would have them going up and down. On the lower wall, that's eight feet high, they boulder across, and they're not up very high, because to be up eight feet would be beyond the thing, because their feet and hands. So, probably the maximum height they would get would be probably six feet, maybe six and a half feet, from their feet from the floor. There is padding on the floor, that would be around all the areas, not just the areas where there's 20 feet in height where they would go up. The facilities alteration form has been done and signed by all the appropriate people. There are a few things that have to be taken down off the wall that would be in the way. Nothing very invasive, just a few soundboard panels and a box that is not being used anymore. It's a dead box, electrical box in the wall. And Mr. Riley is aware of these and has stated that he would be able to take care of those. Then, there's that little paragraph on the rationale. And then, the second page is the standards and grade level outcomes that was asked for in the last meeting. And then, I also added in the bottom additional benefits that would be incorporated with the wall, if it is approved. And that would be, which you can read, interdisciplinary with math, literacy, colors, and geography. At this grade level, you could take the handholds that they use, have letters or colors on them, coordinate lesson plans to enhance those other skills, while they also build their strength and endurance as being able to transverse across the wall there. OT can use it. Obviously, everyone has to be trained to use it. It's a great piece of apparatus for intervention and development of those children, and it can help assess them, too. It's a great challenge for them. And then, we have the SEL, the social and emotional learning aspects of it. These are very key core components that we're trying to instill in our young children, so that they're more able to take on the tasks of everyday life. A lot of our young kids have anxiety, and they don't deal well with adversity. So, hopefully, teaching them these skills of challenging to try to do something with having self-awareness, which builds self-confidence, to try something again if they can't do it and to get through it. We would use those teaching moments to do that. Problem solving. Communication is great with their classmates, if someone can't do it or they are afraid to do it. It's always decision by challenge themselves if they want to do it. If they don't want to do it, no one forces them to do it, so that, we don't want them to be afraid of it. We want them to do it because they want to try it. But it's, it's a great, great tool for a lot of different things in their everyday life. And then, there's the picture of the Bakey wall. The next pictures are how we would secure the wall, so when there is nobody in that area, we don't want people going up it, because it would be obviously a safety issue. The first picture you can see are like snacks that are put on. The second picture on that, you'll see is like a cable that goes across. This would go on the long wall, where they are just eight feet tall. So, the canvas would unsnap and you would slide it down, kind of like a shower curtain, because we have eight feet of wall that would not be having any bouldering on it. So, while it's in use, it could be slid down there, and then we could slide it back, snap it down, so that they wouldn't go on that long wall, bouldering wall. The next page kind of shows it a little more close up, with the hooks where it slides. And then, the whole thing across. This page told me to give a lot of pictures. This is kind of a picture of how the bouldering wall would look. You can move those holds to different spots. It's very easy, so you can always change the challenge of the wall. It doesn't have to stay the same all the time, which is great to give kids new challenges. The page that has like the buckles on it would go in the area on that eight-foot wall piece, so that we can hook them on there, because that's where the most, the 20-foot area goes up. And it would be another way to attach those on, and then it would snap down also. We would also have signage there. This picture that has a big climbing wall on it is kind of just an example of what the climbing wall would look going up. We would have two pieces on the climbing wall going up. There would be, at the top, there would be a platform where a kid could stand. And then, there would also be an inverted piece of cheese, like they call it, so they have to go out and around to reach up to challenge that. And again, they would be in harnesses with helmets and be belayed up there with ropes.
Vicki, can I ask a quick question? Would this have an auto belay system, or would it require for someone to manually belay them?
Manually, this would be a manual.
Okay, so what that means, I want the board, the board doesn't understand probably bouldering and belaying. So, my kids climb, do rock climbing, so I want to explain what that means. What belaying is, is when the student is wearing a harness that's affixed to a clip that's, as, I mean, you could probably hang a car off the clip. I mean, they're really heavy-duty. And the rope goes up and around a firmly attached hook that comes down to an adult, and they control the speed of the climb with the ropes. And then, when the students are ready to come down, they release the rope gradually, so that it's very, very safe. Bouldering is when students work on climbing the wall manually without a belay, without a rope system, but they don't go high enough to, so that it's unsafe. So, bouldering is done on a smaller, shorter section. And when Vicki talks about the mats, we're talking about huge padded mats, not just a And when Vicki talks about the mats, we're talking about huge padded mats, not just a little rubber. We're talking about the big gymnastics mats, right, Vicki?
In the corner where they go up, yeah.
Yeah, where they go really high.
The ones in the bouldering wall are just the, they're probably four-inch thick.
All right, I just wanted everyone to understand the terminology because it's specific to this sport or activity.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Ambrose. And then the last picture that's really light colored shows, is the ceiling part of where those harnesses go up, I mean, ropes go up and go through. And then the last two pages are what our bouldering wall would kind of look like. They're from Nottingham. It's a school over in Hudson. We would probably only have one wedge on that wall there. They don't have a wall that goes up, so that's why they have the two wedges in that wall there just so you can kind of get a better picture of how it looks. And it, like I said, it can be changed out nicely. They can put letters or numbers on it. They can do a map thing for geography. There's a lot of great things that they can do with it curriculum-wise. And then Mr. Angel was kind enough to contact our insurance company, Primex. And he, they had questions that needed to be answered for it to be covered under our insurance for liability, correct? I might not want to say anything.
Any suggestions?
Suggestions, thank you, that they would like to see done. And one was to have a competent installer. The company that we put in there installs all over the country. In fact, they're out in Michigan right now. They're one of the two top installers in the area, Pro Image. And they would obviously have their certificate of insurance and all their paperwork in. As far as annual inspections and maintenance, they give us all that in the contract. The, they recommend it to me when we were talking to have the wall inspected every other year because we only have a small piece of high climbing wall. I mean, if we want to have it inspected every year and it's recommended more to have that done, we would do that. We also would hire a company to come in and certify that. We wouldn't just be inspecting it with our custodians or facilities people. We have a company that would come in and do that. As far as regulations for the wall, at this point, I mean, that is not my building. However, I would recommend that only our people that are trained be, have access to the wall and that they have to be trained in the areas that they're going to use before they can have students in there. We did not discuss and I did not ask Mr. Snyder about the after-school program using that. That would be something that's a decision way above my head. And the, as far as renting it out also would be above my head. That was the other question that we had on there. So we would definitely have all professional people certifying our people installing the wall and then taking care of the maintenance and inspection on it. Did I miss anything? Okay.
I got to ask just one. So they will be harnessed in, the kids?
When they go up on the twenty-foot, yes.
Right, and there'll be somebody holding the harness?
Yes.
And the insurance, they still have some questions, but I'm, no, okay. I wasn't sure what you said because I'm down here. Okay, so they have no problems that they weren't like, yeah, we'll do it, but we want you to do this, this, and this first?
Yeah, they did do that.
That was the thing.
But they've done it already?
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
No?
I was just thinking of the motion.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, okay, so, all right. So nobody goes up without being in a harness. There's always somebody holding onto the tether rope and the insurance is all taken care of. Those were my questions. Jim had his hand up first.
As far as the insurance go, in addition to the inspections, I think that they recommended ongoing training.
Right.
And I'm wondering about costs for the inspections and the certifications ongoing and also the cost for ongoing training.
The ongoing training cost, the PE people that are over in the BAKI school, they have a budget every year. They would put that in the budget. We would get a cost for that. It would come, probably be included in what they already do. Like, the budget shouldn't go up because of it. If it, if it's OT teachers or someone else in the building, then I would think Mr. Snyder would take that and add that into his budget if he wanted to add more people to be trained.
So out of existing budget money or would it require additional budget money?
Right now, it would be, for next year, it's included in this price. And for the following years, I would think that they would try to include it in their existing budget.
What about the, the every other year inspection and certification?
I would, I would say that they would try to include that in that also. The trainings are pretty good because when they go to a training, you can bring like ten people there for the cost of like three hundred and fifty dollars. It's not like so much per person. You can send a group of people to get trained, depending on what you're doing.
Is that done at, like, I know I have to get certified every six months to belay my kids. So do they do that at a climbing center?
They can do it at ours because we have the climbing. They can come to us. Or if they're doing a training close by to us, we're able to jump in with that training also.
So I just wanted to assure you, Jim, that the three hundred and fifty dollar cost of the training can be absorbed by a professional development budget. That's not an additional cost. I don't know, I would like to know what the cost of the inspection is every, every two years. I'm sure it's not a huge sum of money, but that is a very important point because it's, there's pressure points and it needs to be checked.
Right, definitely. So the lower walls obviously is not as important, but the climbing hardwood. And I can get that amount for you. I don't have that right now.
And then the follow-up to that was the response that I read that the insurance company had asked was, is this going to be used on occasion or is it going to be used year-round? And that wasn't clear to me, the response to that, because you did mention down in your presentation how that OT could use it.
Yeah.
And in the summary, it says something about will be used throughout the year. Could also be used as extracurricular opportunity. So those were things that the insurance company asked about is the frequency of use. Do we have a definitive answer on that?
Well, I think you would say it would be used throughout the school year. If someone used it for extracurricular, it would be our people doing that program. It would not be the after-school people. Like, they run intramurals over there, so it would be one of the certified people running that as an activity through their intramural or club programs, after-school activity programs. And they're able to choose one or offer them through the principal. Like, they'll come in and say, can I run this for a few weeks? And they have money, a pool of money. And then if the money's there, then they're able to run that on there. So it would be all, as far as I am concerned and have any decision on it, would be just our department or people that are trained in BAKI offering it to our kids during the school day or in a approved after-school activity that they have approval from.
But if it's an extracurricular activity, it'd be some outside group?
No, the, it would be like, you know how we have Intersclassics here? At both elementary schools, they have activities they run after school as intramurals. Like, BAKI runs Girls on the Run. They run a cooking thing, you know. Teachers can apply to run anything they want. So they could run an after-school climbing, intramural club for a couple of weeks.
But they would have to be certified in this as well?
Oh, yeah. It would be our teachers running it. It would be our instruct. We wouldn't have anyone from the outside coming, running that. No one that is not certified would be on that wall running any activity.
Okay, so then I would ask Mr. Angel, was that amount of use discussed with the insurance company?
Pretty much the wall's going to be insured for any use that we throw at it. I think it would become an issue if we were to rent out the facility and include the wall into that. I think it would, it wouldn't extend to that use.
Thank you.
Kami, sorry.
I think this is wonderful and I think it's wonderful of Katie Toscano to donate the money for this. It sounds great. As soon as you talked about ways, actually, as soon as you talked about a twenty-foot wall and helmets, like, of course, my mind went right to safety. And I appreciate you including information about how to keep other people off of it because my mind also immediately went to all the events I've been to with my own kids at BAKI, Christmas parties and Halloween parties and Boy Scouts. And of course, you bring your little kids and there's all these little kids running around and they get into everything. Nobody's really watched, well, they're not always being monitored a hundred percent of the time. So I would like, if you could go into a little more detail on how you, how we would secure this to prevent absolutely, you know, anyone that should not be using it.
Right.
To be getting on there.
Well, from what I, like I said, I was over at the London Dairy School today. They have that big massive climbing wall you saw. And basically, those clips that hooked in, I contacted the company today to get the cost. Is they cut canvas piece of heavy material that gets clipped in above and then it drapes down over it and gets snapped down around the wall. And then obviously, we would have signage on there. It's very hard to get them to, I mean, I've asked schools that have them. Kids don't, I know, I understand definitely what you say because when we have even outside activities here, we have kids climbing everywhere, even in the high school. They're down, up those metal pipes and everywhere because people feel safe here and they let their kids have fun, which is great. So it would be secured down. We can also, if we want to, instead of doing the snap piece, is that we could run a cable down through the sides and lock it down on the bottom so it just doesn't snap off. That's another option I'm looking at.
I would like that. I was going to ask that question and you just addressed it. I, the thing that made me uncomfortable was the fact that, I know a lot about this so it's easy for me to support it, but I think that the anxiety that anyone who doesn't participate in rock climbing would wonder is, A, when I saw the snaps, I was like, that's not locked. So if it can be locked, I, I'm more comfortable because I understand what it means to put a big piece of, you can't climb that when there's canvas on it. There's little foothold, they're tiny. You can't bend the canvas to get on it. Do you know what I'm saying? Once it's, once it's locked, it's locked, but I would like it locked.
Right.
But otherwise, you could get under the canvas and climb on it.
If it's not locked, you could, I like the idea of locking it, yeah.
So we can run a cable on the bottom and the top and then we can lock them down.
Is there, how substantial is the cost, the extra cost for that?
That, what they're going to use out of their budget this year, their supply budget, because they know if it can't fit into this. It wasn't, I asked over there, they said it was only like, which I was shocked, a couple hundred dollars for the canvas, but I'm even getting a quote. They're sending me a quote. And, and we will look at that. And it, and there are other places around that would do the same thing. You know, it's a, it's an on and canvas type company that we're looking at to do something like that. These people are pretty nice, though, great. We've used them before here. They did the canopy on the concession stand, the metal canopy. It's extended out past that. Very good reputation company.
Okay.
I'm definitely not in favor of this. I just think it's too big a liability issue, to be honest with you. But even that, that notwithstanding, depending what my colleagues do, I cannot support a project for BAKI that doesn't also get implemented at Memorial. And given that we're going with a whole new setup, how does this fit in with K through three and four, five, and six? So it's, in spite of the emotional issue, there's really some logistical issue because we shouldn't be doing something at BAKI that we're not doing at Memorial under the current configuration. But now we're looking at a year from now, changing the grades. So how does the climbing wall fit into that?
Well, it's, like I said, in the additional benefits, this is a great opportunity for us to get these kids, when they're young, to do an activity that challenges them to trust other people, have some responsibility, and it helps them with their anxieties and things that they have. Young kids need to be able to be challenged to work through something that they might not be good at right away. Young kids are very good climbers. I mean, if you, any of you will remember back, your young kids were probably up on top of a table and then a chair and something else with not any holds or anything.
I think this is a great thing for kids to do. Don't get me wrong. I don't want it part of our schools. I don't care how much insurance we have. If this one kid gets hurt, there's going to be ripple effects all over the place. I just think it's a big risk. Not that it's not a great opportunity for the kids. I do believe everything you're telling us. So I just don't see it in the schools. I really don't.
Well, okay. That's fine. I respect that. Everyone has an opinion.
I've got some questions. I am appreciative of Ms. Toscano, if I'm saying that correctly, generosity. But I have another, a number of questions. We mentioned that there's going to be harnesses and helmets. Is there a cost associated with those or are those part of the donation?
Part of the quote.
Those are part of the seventeen-six fifty that we're talking about. My other question, I had some of the questions that Ellie had about safety issues and concerns also with Memorial versus particularly in the coming year with the angst already being built up. I think it's possible in the outer year where, okay, there's a different established play and it's not like one side getting it versus the other.
Right, right. It changes in Memorial.
Yeah, I've got concerns just with operationally, how does this go? So kindergarteners, first, second, third grade, when does this activity occur? Are we taking time out of other studies to be able to go down and saying, well, we're learning other things there that are valuable, so therefore, we take times out of other studies to go do it? When you're doing rock climbing, not everybody participates at the same time because it's going to be supervised. What are all the rest of the kids doing? So you got now, you're going to have to have somebody else in there watching the rock wall and then somebody else for all the other kids that aren't doing the rock wall. So you have to have more people than you would normally have during this timeframe if it's normally your phys ed time or what have you. There's going to be logistics and labor involved in order to be able to manage that piece. That's, that's a bigger part of my concern is there's that. And you mentioned, well, no, kids aren't going to be forced to do that. But those that don't will be a bit ostracized. If everybody's doing this and you're going through and there's those four that never do that, correct? There could be some problems there. So I'm not convinced it's a good idea. I think there's aspects to what you're saying that I, I see benefit to. Certainly, part of me goes to anything that gets them away from those silly machines with the keyboards and the electronics is a good thing.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So I appreciate that piece of it. But I've just still got some of those concerns that I've mentioned. Have we thought through how we would manage that in terms of who's watching them and who's doing what with the other kids?
I'm going to let Vicki answer because she's.
There's usually two teachers in there and they would have other activities going on because where this is a fitness unit, they would probably have other stations that they'd be doing exercises and activities in. There, when they do phys ed now, they have a lot of different activities going on at once in the gymnasium. The kids come in and, you know, they, it's pretty fun to watch these kids at a young age. They come in, they know the routine. They come in quiet, they sit down, they explain their activity they're going to do. They have rules that they have to follow. If they're not following the rules, then the teacher, you know, has a, I'm going to say consequence, but has an alternative activity for them to do until they can go back and do the activity the way they're supposed to do it, no matter what they're doing. You know, they have like maybe a timeout for thirty seconds or something. It's nothing drastic, but something to get the kid back so that they're thinking of the safety rules or the rules they're supposed to play by. So it's just classroom management, as all the teachers have. As far as the, I just lost my train of thought. You had another question.
The age, the K three nature.
Oh, yeah, the age group. Kids are doing this at preschool ages in places. I mean, kids are exposed to this and outdoing all kinds of activities at all ages now. The earlier you can get a young child involved in something that's physical, as you said, so they want to do something that's not having a device in their hand and gives them the ability to get strength and to get courage. You said about a kid, that was what it was, that didn't want to do it. We look at the positive side. Most of the time, even here in the high school, when a kid is not confident enough to do something, most kids rally around them and support them to try to do it. I mean, are there kids that can be mean? There are. But the higher percentage is, you know, oh, come on, you can try it, I'll help you. You know, oh, great, you did two, that's great. Next time, maybe you can do three. I mean, and then the kids get excited about it. I mean, that's what you see most of the time when you go into our classrooms. I mean, we are so lucky here to have that atmosphere and environment for our kids. I mean, it's no different, we have, do you hear some trash talking and stuff? Yes, but most of the time, it's all positive. We get a new kid in the high school. How awkward is it, is to come to a high school your junior year and know nobody here and you're trying to fit in? Our kids rally around grabbing that kid and wanting to be part of their group. And our elementary schools are the same. I go over to BAKI to a class and I go out in the field and they're running around. A kid falls, someone, you know, they're laughing, but they're helping them up. Come on, get going, you can do it again. It's, you know, it's a chance for them to. It's, you know, it's a chance for them to learn some trust and confidence in themselves. Every time now a kid falls or does something, someone rushes over to them instead of like, oh, you're okay, and if they're hurt, okay, you're hurt, let's take care of you. Learn how to be a little tougher to deal with life as it comes at you, task by task. I mean, we're, our kids are just, you know, you can't say anything to a kid, oh, I can't say anything to you, you, you know, you might, you know, take it the wrong way and be mad. No, I'm your friend. Ellie, you need to cut your hair a little shorter, it looks cuter when it's shorter. You know, kids have to be able to do that, instead of, oh, I can't say anything and then they'll be mad at me. No, we've got to teach them when they're young, just like we do about smoking. Do not smoke when they're young. We got rid of cigarettes, and then they came out with vaping. Now we've got to start all over again in kindergarten. Do not vape, and it's going to take us 10 years to get rid of that. These kids are our future. We want them tougher, we want them to try things. If they don't want to try it, they can encourage another classmate to try it. Doesn't always have to be the one doing it, they can be the one inspiring someone to do it. Everyone has a role.
Jim, sorry, I'm calling on people, teacher and me.
Yeah, I'm all for the challenge part of it, and I see a real value in getting kids to come out of their comfort zone and try some things that they may not feel naturally inclined to do in the proper environment, and learn that they can do those things. This is, would be used during a scheduled fitness time as an alternative activity to activities they're already doing. It's not like a special time is added to their schedule for this.
It could be, I mean, they could, they have down, I mean, they have times.
That kind of goes to Jamie's question about, are they going to be taken away from other curriculum?
We have physical.
No, I mean, if they were.
Part of their physical fitness.
Right, it'd be part of their physical fitness class, but a teacher, if she gets trained, you have a first grade teacher, I mean, I've seen this done at the middle school level, kids have a hard time with geography. The kid doesn't have a device in their hand telling them, take a right at the next street, they don't know where to go, to learn where things are, to actually learn by activity-based activities. You go down and you could put on that bouldering wall that doesn't, it goes up eight feet, you could put all kinds of geographic things up there and the kids have to learn to go and they're going to remember that. I went five hand stops over here to get to this place. You know, it's, so if they wanted to do a, an activity-based curriculum thing, kid's going to learn it 10 times better and faster by probably learning it on that wall than they're going to do in the classroom, sitting there having a teacher handing them a card, colors. You could have all different colors, and a kid that's struggling with colors.
As long as we don't detract from the fundamental instruction that needs to go on. But, and the other part of my conversation is, is that I'm not concerned about BAKI getting a wall and Memorial not getting a wall. This is a private donation. If people, you know, if the PTO from Memorial wants a wall for that school, there's no reason why they can't go out and raise money for it. I don't think the school board should feel obligated, if a wall goes in a BAKI, to then build another comparable wall at Memorial. I mean, it's just not the way things work.
Just along that line, in terms of the equity, I guess I will point out that the year after next, it's not going to be, I mean, all the kids, all of the kids in our district are going to be going to BAKI anyway. All of our pre-K through third graders will have the opportunity to use that wall. So there's, that makes me feel a little more comfortable. I do appreciate you raising that issue, though.
Yeah.
That's true, it is hard, because we have things in schools that others don't. Some get grants for Edison residence, they put things up, and other schools haven't done it. Kids get different opportunities in life, and hopefully they grab them all.
I guess I'm last. To answer a couple of concerns that, I wrote them down too. When you get the young child that's anxious, you haven't go up one, two, or three stones, you know, and then come on down. So just try one, you know. Okay, yeah, you did one, okay, next, a couple days later, go try two. So they learn. The other thing is, what I've done, is have some experience and they go up and they push off and you've got them. You say, see, I got them. Or you have the child go up one or two and push off and, see, you're not going anywhere, don't worry about it, I got you. So that they learn that they're not going to fall down and hurt themselves. Ellie, I liked what you said about, you know, not everybody's going to get the chance, but I looked at it kind of just the opposite. I said, you know, with the reconfiguration, we're looking at one, two, and three, and that's just when you want to start building the self-confidence of these kids. You know, you want them to realize that, yeah, I can do this. And, you know, it's going to be like swimming, you're not going to dive right in. Some kids will dive right in and some kids will walk in slowly, but hopefully at the end of the summer, everybody's equal in swimming or down close to it. So the child that can go up one, two, and three in September, hopefully by June, you know, he's scurrying right up there, you know. And that's the learning process, and they overcome these fears. And they understand that, you know, even though I'm scared, somebody's got me, you know, I've still got that protection. So at first, I got to tell you, I had all kinds of negatives, and then, I'm glad everybody else spoke before me, because then I went, yep, that one's gone away, that one's gone away, that one's gone away. So anyway, unless there's further discussion, nope. I knew you didn't say anything, I was wondering why.
Well, I support the climbing wall, because not all kids enjoy team sports, but this could be a lifelong physical activity.
Oh, yes.
And this is a public gift, so policy KCD requires a public hearing. Would this constitute our public hearing? Okay, I just want to double check on that.
It's been advertised.
Oh, no problem, okay.
If you want to see a climbing wall, go to Kingston Days. There's been one there for 10 years at least, and it is the most popular, I think, thing. And this thing is, this sucker is about probably 40 feet. I used to climb trees, I used to clear land, I used to climb trees. And let me tell you, my first anxiety was, I got hurt more often just jumping down three or four feet and twisting ankles than I did, you know. So I'm glad, and I'm also glad it's the big ones and not the little mats that we had when we were kids. So anyway, so, move the motion? Okay. We did have a motion, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I want to be out of here too, my mind's on this, okay. All in favor? You got that, Phyllis, all right? Opposed? And there's no abstentions, because there's nobody else here. Okay, moving on.
Thank you, guys, for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Matt, you got some Primex?
I do. Ready? Hey. I'm here to ask for the board to.
Forgiveness, not permission?
Sorry?
Are you here to ask for forgiveness, not permission?
Yeah, forgiveness.
I was just trying to get you quiet down.
I'm here to ask for approval of the Primex contract. Primex is our property liability and workers' comp insurance provider. They're a public risk pool, meaning all, not all, but most cities and towns and school districts in the state of New Hampshire participate in the program. So essentially, all of these local governments and school districts are paying for the losses of all the other members within that pool. There is no profit motive behind this risk pool. And also, Primex offers other services to all of its members, such as training, like management training, there's some other training that they provide that we probably wouldn't participate in. Those usually are typically for like police departments, fire departments, DPW. But here, we would have like sexual harassment training and HR-related training. Now, you can, I've listed out all the different premiums for the past several years, and you can see that for most years, the premiums increased between three and nine percent, however, they've remained flat for the last two years.
Question? Peter?
I'm sorry.
Question?
Yeah. Wait, hold on one second. Do we need a motion on this? Do you want a motion on this?
Yes.
How about a motion first, and then we could have discussion.
Move that we contract with Primex.
This is who we have now, right?
Correct.
I asked you about raising the deductible, you said the deductibles are fixed.
Yes, that's correct.
What I forgot to ask you about was, and this was in the finance meeting, there, I assume that this has an inflation rider, because I'm looking at 5.1%. Is that an inflation rider? When I'm, I'm looking at the difference between property values from 2018, 19, and then projected 19, 20.
Yeah, so basically, what you're looking at is what's called a cap agreement. Basically, they're capping the increase rates at a certain amount for members of the pool. So the cost can't increase beyond this particular percentage, so it's not necessary.
That's the nine percent, right?
Yes.
But I'm looking at, it says change in property 5.1%. And then I'm looking back at the, it looks like changes in property from previous years, one was a minus 1.3%.
Yeah.
Yeah. Here's the five.
I think that's your experience rate.
I guess my question is then, how do they determine, for the purposes of underwriting this, the values of our properties? And they keep going up, usually that's an inflation rider. But 5.1% is a lot higher than the inflation of the last few years. Even though property values have gone up market-wise, I don't know that the costs to build have.
Okay, Primex actually hires a person to come in and value all the assets of the school district. So there's a list of insurables, and then they put a dollar amount on them. And I've actually asked questions of them, because they put, I think, a value of like $6.8 million on the old science building, and I'm.
Seriously?
I'm in the process of.
Can we sell it for that?
I'm in the process.
You can't even sell it for 1% of that.
I was going to say, I thought, well, anyway.
I'm in the process of trying to lower that value.
It'd be cheaper to raise it. And then there's nothing on there, so we take that $6.8 million valuation off.
Yeah.
Jesus, 6.8.
Just to clarify, not raise the property value.
No, no, no.
Raise the property.
Thanks, Steve, I was hoping some of.
Wanted to make that clear.
Level it.
Level it, flatten it.
Jesus.
So right now, I'm looking at the schedule for the change between FY '18 and '19 and '19 and '20. And they're saying that all of the facilities that they're insuring currently is valued at $93,273,000 and some change. They're saying that's going to go up to $97,991,000 and some change.
Yes.
So that's like a, almost a $7 million, no, $4 million, almost a $5 million dollar increase.
They probably took on another district.
Oh, this is the total of the whole?
The whole district.
State.
Oh, you mean, oh, the $97 million?
Yeah. No, it's, can't be even close to that.
It's, they're saying that's Samborn?
No, no, I don't know what it is.
It's their whole pool, right? Their whole insurance pool.
I'm asking Matt, I wasn't totally sure, I.
Well, I just, just so that you understand, I can only go as far as, I've, there is a list of the valuation, and the way that they value it is based upon the reconstruction of the asset.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Like the seminary building is like just over $3 million.
Okay.
Okay, so I could see that the value of the properties would change from year to year based upon what the reconstruction value is of those assets. This is not depreciable value.
It's called replacement values.
Replacement value.
Yeah, and you're, so you're working on that number with them?
I am currently working on trying to reduce the value of some of the buildings so that we can get some savings. I'm also trying to work, they also have a discount program, and I'm trying to go through their checklist and trying to get a discount for us. But that means that we have to do a few hurdles, jump a few hurdles in order to get that discount.
Thanks.
Questions? Move the motion?
Take the vote.
All in favor? Okay, Matt, you're still up. You get the 457?
I'm sorry, at some point, you need to sign one of those documents.
Yes, I don't have it in front of me, but Phyllis will make sure I do not leave, I will tell you that now.
Okay, the 457 plan. So let me back up a little bit. Currently, the employees of the school district participate in the hand for retirement, which is a retirement, which is a defined benefit plan. Now, we also offer a 403B deferred compensation plan, which is very similar to what is offered in the commercial world as a 401K. Now, 403Bs are for nonprofits and education or public school districts. Now, a 457 plan includes state and local governments, which school districts falls under the umbrella of state and local governments, okay? So just because of this particular falling under two different plans, educators at the school district are eligible to participate in both plans at the same time at the percentage of contributions of those particular plans. Now, these are, these are plans that are, fall under the Internal Revenue Services regulations, okay? So they can contribute, like one was $19 million, and then they can contribute more than that, where every, everybody else in the country can't do this, okay? The benefit for this is for those employees who are retiring, they can defer their sick and vacation buyout at the end of their employment for a future tax period for the Internal Revenue Service. Okay? All this is, is just a benefit to offer to the employees to defer their compensation to the future.
And Matt, those employees are administrators, because they're the only ones who have vacation time, correct?
Correct.
So this is the Teamsters Union? It is, isn't it?
That would be one of them, yes.
So.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to sign.
We discussed this in finance, and Jamie and Ellie had an interesting thought on this. So I'd like to hear that should raised with the board.
Sure, I'm aware of the meeting.
You are?
And I think that we might want to discuss that in non-public, so I think we should defer this motion until after our non-public session.
There is no motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, hold off on deciding about making a motion. Thank you, Ellie. I meant defer, like as in, don't do one now.
And there is no motion.
We'll have the non-public, and then we'll go back into public.
Discussion of that in a non-public session.
Sounds great, yeah.
Just to clarify, could I, I'm sorry, sorry, before we move on, is there a cost to the district to administer this?
Always.
Or to offer this?
No.
No.
There's no cost.
No, the employees are paying for the cost of this.
It's just an additional benefit.
So when they buy, when they contribute money into the plan, they're actually paying administrative fee at that moment, and then they're also paying administrative fee monthly.
We need to stop this right now.
Yeah.
We need to stop this until we go to non-public.
Yeah.
Okay, it really, we can clarify that for you then, there's other things to consider.
Fund balance?
Okay.
You're having a trifecta moment.
I am. Center of attention. All right, I am estimating year-end unassigned fund balance at $1,500,000, I'm sorry, $1,509,376. This represents, basically to calculate this, you start out the year at $1,504,000, estimated revenues at $33,391,000, and estimated expenditures of $33,387,000. Now, I have to note that the estimated expenditures includes an additional $250,000 that we're anticipating to spend for the middle school transition. Okay? Now.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Yep? Nope?
Okay. The next block down represents the, it's what's called the contingency fund. And under the contingency fund, the school district can retain up to 2.5% of the net assessment. And the way it's calculated is, is you take your budgeted expenditures minus your budgeted revenues, and the remainder is your net assessment. At 2.5%, we can retain up to. At 2.5 percent, we can retain up to $718,000. This is, this is fund balance that would not get returned back to the taxpayers to reduce the tax rate. It can, however, be used for only two purposes. The first purpose is for an emergency expenditure. Emergency expenditure requires the school district and the Department of Revenue Administration to approve that. It would have to be an emergency. It would be something that's unusual. The second way funds can come out of this is to reduce the tax rate, and only the school board can choose to remove funds to reduce the tax rate. So, what I would be asking the school board to do, hopefully tonight, is to retain up to $500,000 of fund balance, leaving a million dollars, I'm sorry, returning a million dollars to the taxpayers. And that $500,000, should the school district decide, you know, that they want to reduce the tax rate, they can reduce it before the tax rate's actually set. The purpose of trying to retain it tonight is more of a financial statement purpose. I need to have an approval if the board decides to do this before June 30.
So, you're up against a timeline.
Yeah, right. And, and really, this would be a discussion we would want to have at the end of every fiscal year.
Ellie, I saw your hand.
I think we should do this. I was gonna put a motion on the floor, unless, unless the chairman of finance wants to move, and I'll second it.
I'll, I'll second Ellie's motion.
Okay. I move that we place $500,000 into fund balance.
Contingency fund.
Contingency fund for the district, subject of course to the two...
I just want to make sure, because it's a little detail, I want to make sure the detail is correct in the minutes there.
The amount is 500,000, and the remainder of 1,909,000, et cetera, to be returned to the district.
You get that all right, Phyllis?
Yeah.
All right, and that was seconded right, Jim. Did you have any further discussion?
I think this is a very prudent thing to do. We can only use it for two things. One is an emergency, in which case, it would be, um, the DRA would have to approve the, using the funds accordingly. Or we, as a board, can decide in the fall, if you want to use all of it or some of it to reduce the impact of taxes based on how everything else shakes out.
We've got a billion given and a half million in hand, that we can then add to if we want.
No, we can't add to it.
No, 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 no.
Not add, I mean, add to the reduction. I'm sorry, I'm adding to a reduction.
We can, we can apply it towards reducing the impact of...
Applying a better term.
Of the tax impact, but it, and we then will have a full picture of the revenues that have come in and so forth. And we've also secured the $250,000 that go towards the middle school transition for this year.
Jamie?
Some of the same points, I wanted to make this for clarity's sake. So, the middle school transition plan was approximately 750,000. We're gonna try to spend 250,000 of that now, which means that when it comes time to move the middle school, it would only be 500, it wouldn't still be 750,000, we'd be paying that down. If, in fact, that 250,000 is not able to be expended within this fiscal year, that 250 would become part of this number. So, I'm in favor of this for two reasons. One is, we need, we need an answer for the, to close the books. Most importantly, we have the ability to put the whole thing back to the taxpayers later, but it allows us to close the books and find out what the final revenues are, what the final expenditures are, what was or wasn't needed for the 250. And then we can still make the decision to return this to the taxpayers if that's a prudent thing to do. So, it doesn't, it does not prevent us from moving 100 percent back, but it does allow us to have an emergency contingency, and at the same time, look at, um, basically balancing out and, and trying to avoid spikes in the, in the tax rates.
Correct.
Or drops.
Or drops.
Or drops.
Because that was my fear. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I, I have the same take on it as Jamie just expressed. I, this is a real hard thing for me to, to do, because I know that when money's available in large numbers, management of the costs has to be very, very meticulous, so that we don't spend anything we don't need to spend, just because it's there. But I do think we need, and we do have facilities maintenance reserve fund, we have different funds, we have fund for special ed, but they're not very big when you're, we're taking on a project like this. Typically, in construction, you figure 15 percent, sometimes 20 percent of a contingency, because you don't know what you're gonna run into. But again, that doesn't mean because we've got this, we can be loosey-goosey about anything. We have to be very, very tight with the money. And so far, the superintendent and business manager-to-be have impressed me with, with those, those, that commitment. And the fact that that $500,000 can only be spent for an emergency with the approval of the DRA, is it?
Correct.
And the school board.
And the school.
Correct. Not just the DRA. And the school board can decide at any point, over the next year, to give that money back to the taxpayers. So, based on all of that, and I want to give as much of it back as we possibly can, I'm gonna vote yes for this.
I would just like to say, for the public knowledge, that I've never been more impressed by the diligence, fair, reasonable, and pointed questions that the finance committee have asked about anything that's going on. So, I, I find a lot of comfort in that, because I know that Matt is working hard to make sure the numbers are tight, but a really sincere, transparent check and balance of our fiscal work has been going on from the whole board. Right? I mean, we'll send out the manifest, I get really specific questions that are about pertinent things from different people about different issues. We answer those questions, and I just think that the public needs to understand that this is a very high-functioning situation in terms of accountability. Right? So, I, I appreciate the support, but I also recognize and agree with you that it is very beneficial for us to have the funds should we need them. My bigger concern is that I want to make sure that the blood sugar, so to speak, in the tax rate stays level. People don't do real well when it goes way down, and then a year later, it goes up, they don't remember that it went down the year before. If we can try to equalize and keep it flat or slowly declining, that's much better than, than having it be bumpy. Right? So, this helps to do that, because the, I mean, I'm operating that we will be fiscally responsible, and unless there's a major emergency, this money will go back to taxpayers at the exact time that the second year of the teacher's contract kicks in. So, when that happens, the raise of the teacher's contract will be offset by the money that you're withholding today. And that's a really good thing for taxpayers, because they won't feel that bump of the teacher's contract in the second year that they voted in. Thank you.
Move the motion? All in favor? Budget calendar?
Uh, the budget calendar, it pretty much just mirrors what we did this year. Same process, same, same, the budget committee worked really hard. Annie and I talked regularly to try to set it up, and in the board meeting calendar, it's, reflects these budget meetings that are joint meetings as well. So, I, I don't have much to say, except that it's, it's working very well, and I, I will say that this year, I hope, is relatively smooth, because the administrative team and I have discussed pretty much just proposing a default budget for the next year, because we're going through this process of the move. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
I'm assuming the budget committee is on board with this?
They've approved it already at their previous meeting. Larry's not here, I forgot.
Yeah. Okay.
Does this include the discussion of when we're gonna have that August meeting?
No, this is just the budget calendar.
Oh, the budget calendar.
Yeah, thanks, Jim. That's next, or coming up next.
Let's look at the policies.
So, do we need to approve the calendar?
Yeah, I just need a, a motion and approval, thank you.
Jim seconded, Tammy, Tammy...
Whatever.
Okay.
Okay. Discussion, all in favor?
I'm sorry, Jim, policies are next, the, the meeting calendar's coming up.
Will you take a deep breath?
So, yeah, I've got some policies here, let me open it up. Let me read my motion. Prove new policies, B, JBAAA, JEC, JICDD, JICE, GICF, GICEAJ, GICIR, GCKR1, GCKR2, GIE, JJC, JGIB, JGIFL, JJJ, JKB, JRBB, repeal old policies, JBA, and JICKR, and JK, reaffirm policies, JCB-R, and JFA, and approve as revised policies, ECEEA, JFA-R, with first and second read.
Second.
You get that all written down, right? Yeah.
I'll send it to Phyllis.
Have you ever made the motion?
Phyllis, yeah, he made the mo, next seconded.
Third, oops, sorry.
Before we approve, um, there were two typos. One was for JFA-R, technical advisory residency. Jamie found a typo, it said the policy district instead of the policy of the district, so we corrected that. We also had a duplicated section represented twice in policy JRBB, confidential student information, we corrected that. And for policy, JBAA-A, sexual harassment addendum, we have to add the dates of 2019-2020 at the top, and we need to renew that every year. I did sneak in one more policy on this list, which was not reviewed by you before the meeting. It's EEA.
Pam, in your motion, did you say EC, buildings and ground alterations as well?
I did, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And that is gonna retain the $2,500 floor for board approval. We're not gonna change the amount. Let me see if I can find that last, last policy, EEA, before you ask questions. Yeah, there it is. This is, uh, bus transportation. The superintendent would like to add the following. Kindergarten through grade six students will not be discharged from school unless a parent guarding or known adult is present to pick them up at the designated bus stop or at the school building or after-school event.
Was that included in the list you read?
That was not included in the list. It was just given to me yesterday. So, it's the same policy about bus transportation. You just want to indicate that parents have, or an adult has to be present for kindergarten through grade six students when they are dropped off at the end of the day.
Picked up.
Picked up. Question?
Or picked up, but I assume that means bus stop as well.
Yes, there needs to be an adult there.
How, I mean, you're making that a policy, that means, in my mind, you're responsible.
Yep.
How are you gonna manage that?
Uh, well, it's the, the rule of thumb, when I was a elementary school principal, great question, thank you for asking, and I think it's important for the public to understand that my philosophy for young children is that you, you need to have a hand-to-hand rule. So, um, a first-grade student should not just be given a note saying they can walk home from school and just leave the school grounds and go out into the community. They need to leave with an adult, because in this day and age with liability, doing so regardless of the release, I feel very anxious about that. It's kind of like Ellie's concern about the rock wall. Yeah, you might be covered, but there's a lot more to it than when a kid gets hurt or something horrible happens to them. For our youngest learners, they need to be handled hand-to-hand. We do have, you may not know this, but in the rest of the policy, there is, if parents give written notice, we can drop them off at the bus stop to go to the house without the parent being outside. I don't love that, but I can live with that. What I can't live with is kids just leaving and walking out into the community. But typically, the bus, the adult that has the child in their custody sees the other adult and then gives the child to that adult, and that's how we manage that. I would rather have a bus driver bring a kid back to school. We deal with it and call the parents than just drop them off. I, I have a lot of passion around this issue, because in this day and age, we train children to run out of school because someone may shoot them. Why would we just let them go out into the community? Just not comfortable with that.
I'm just concerned that, I mean, things come up for parents, legitimate things, where they can't be where they said they're gonna be, and you're gonna, you're gonna rely on them to contact you. But if they don't...
Then they come back to school and we keep them till they...
Come back on the bus and then sit in a room somewhere, or...
Yeah, the adults there, the secretary or the principal or whatever, the, the principals stay until the, their staff at the building, until the kids, the bus runs are called in at the end of the day.
What about when you're picking them up in the morning? Does a parent have to be standing there with their kid?
No, because we, we, that's when we assume responsibility for the student. So, you have to remember that there's a, a greater likelihood of an issue at the drop-off point than the pickup point.
Yeah.
Because if they're not there to pick up, we didn't have responsibility for them. But the way I look at it is, there, there's a, a rule in law, it's called in parentis loco, and what it means is that the school district is essentially the parent of the child during the time that they're within our care, custodian, custodial care. And I feel that, that, and the principals, I mean, this isn't just coming from me, I've talked to them this week, they want to make sure that our youngest learners go home to an adult. I have a fifth-grade son, he comes home alone every day. We, we've worked that out with the school, he's fine, his mother gets home very, very shortly after, but I have to tell you, I don't like it. Right? I don't, but I do it, because it's all, what works for us. The other option was to make him go to aftercare for an hour, and he, let's just say that was quite a battle, because that's what we wanted.
Well, you've heard the expression latch, latchkey kids, right?
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of kids go home to an empty house.
Right, which is very sad.
But it's a fact of life.
And there is, and there is an option in the policy for parents to sign off for that to occur, but they have to give us a written notice. What I'm concerned about is kids walking out of the school. What happened is, uh, our schools have a practice of making sure that students walk from the school door to where they're going and they can see it. That's not what's clear in policy. We want to make policy congruent with practice.
It says an adult, and I'm assuming there's some sort of a waiver or something, so if someone comes in and says, you know, Sally Jones, a freshman at the high school is gonna babysit afterwards, my child can be released to Sally Jones.
There has been a, the process, at least at Bakers, has been that they do not release children to older siblings. But that doesn't mean that the parent couldn't sign off, and we can talk about that.
Right, okay.
Right? The key that I want is that the kid is going from hand-to-hand.
I think we have a babysitter.
No, no, actually not. Just personally, I used, when I went to Bakers, I grew up, I lived in the Larson House right next to the seminary, so like, right across the street. And I would walk home every day to an empty house. How would that work? Because like, my parent wasn't able to go home.
Yeah, so what would happen is your mom would sign a release to the school, but that's within sight of the school.
Yeah.
So, the school would see you going to where you're going. What the concern is from the school is kids, the, the policy is so open right now, that a parent could ask the Bakers School to release their child to walk any distance in the district. And it's their right to do so. So, if I live five miles from the school, I could say, I want my child to walk home, and you, we would have to let them. That, that's what the policy reads right now, the handbook in the policy. We need to tighten that up. Right? It's one thing to go, if the board was more comfortable with a quarter mile from the school, I, I can live with that, but what I can't do is have it be wide open. We did have an issue come up this week that was of great concern.
I, I, I get that, the walking part, but I guess I'm going back to the bus stop release part? Can, so, kindergarten through grade six will not be discharged from school unless a parent guarding, is present to pick them up at the designated bus stop.
Right.
So, I'm going back, I'm going to grade, say, four, five, six, when, I guess we're gonna be revising the, the bus routes, et cetera, but when my, when my kids were in sixth grade, the bus stop was, the bus didn't stop at my house. Stopped at the end of the street where...
Right.
And are we, are we specifying that parents are gonna have to be waiting at that bus stop? That's not, like, they're gonna have to leave their house and walk to a bus stop to pick the kids up?
Great question. So, my, my understanding, and Pam, you can clarify, that the policy read prior to what I'm reading right now, that, that at the bus stop component, you can give a note to the school saying that it's okay to drop your kid off. So, I just want to clarify that, that this is, the expectation is that an adult's gonna pick the kid up unless they've signed a release saying that we can let them go. Right? Right? That's what I had to do for my son. What I don't want is for it to say that you can sign a release and let them walk from home from school for any distance across the district. Right? So, so Pam, can you show where the part is about the release?
No, I can't.
So, if the kid gets out at 3:30, the parent doesn't get home until 6:00 PM, they would sign a release.
They would have to sign a release. Yep. So, I think the key is to maintain the language that...
I don't think there's any language...
There was.
Okay, well, I can't find the word release.
That's okay, I'll get it. Let's do, let's do the other ones, and I'll look that up real quick.
Well, we have a motion on the floor, everything else except this one here.
Yep, let's do the motion for everything else, and then we'll do this one.
I was just curious, did you pick Grade Six for a particular reason?
I did, because of, I was hoping that we wouldn't have to rewrite the policy at the beginning of next year, but we could do five for now. K5 for now, and then rewrite it before 2020.
I mean, grade, sixth graders are usually in the, what, eleven, twelve? They're usually old enough to babysit themselves, babysit other children, twelve especially, around twelve, anyway. And there's, I don't believe New Hampshire has a law specifying what, you know, the age under which, sorry?
Yeah, no, it's okay. Let's, let's do the motion that's on the floor, and then I'll come back to this, we'll do a motion on this and adjust the language a little bit.
You had your hand up. Yeah. So, Policy JJJ. So, I have a concern with the additions that we put into the New Hampshire School Board Associations. So, we added the phrase, "Home-educated student," this is about access to public school programs by non-public charter school and home-educated pupils. It says, "Home-educated students participating in school programs will be expected to adhere to the same academic and behavioral guidelines as students fully enrolled." So, this makes some sense, and Superintendent Ambrose gave me some information. You can't have somebody saying, "Hey, we want to access a physics course, but we only want to access it one day a week when the physics course is three days a week." Makes total sense to me. The reason I have a problem with this is, I could also read it differently to say, "Hey, it says for not just academic courses, but extracurricular." You could read that to say, "I'm sorry, homeschooler, you've added religion to your homeschooling activities, and as adding religion, you're not following our academic guidelines, therefore your child cannot play sports." And that I have a problem with. So, I would prefer to just do one of two things, either eliminate that whole section to negate having to deal with that and boxing this in one way or the other, or to change it to, to read that, "Home-educated students participating in school, curricular programs will be expected to adhere to the same academic and behaviorals. Co-curricular programs would be expected to adhere to the same behavioral guidelines." So, it's your amendment, I'd like to make a friendly amendment. Do you have a preference of one of those two options, or would you like me to amend it?
Do you have Mr. Dawson speak to your?
Sure.
I'd like Mr. Dawson.
I just want to add one thing to that. It could be that they'll follow the curriculum at a minimum. So, if they add other stuff in, like religion or something else, the school has no say about that.
Correct, but, so here's the issue that I have. For homeschooling, people have chosen to homeschool because they want to do it different.
Right.
They want a different schooling experience, that they believe that they can deliver that experience better for their children than sending them to a public school. They're still paying taxes to the public school, but they want this different scenario. That might include, for example, I don't do everyday math because I don't think it works. So, my child's got a different curriculum for math than the public school has. This would say, "Oh, I'm sorry, you're not following our guidelines, our academic guidelines." And there's nobody's intent to do that, I fully understand that. I just don't want to be putting it into a policy which is, in effect, the law that we're going to operate under, that would allow that interpretation, because that's what the words say.
So, what was your alternative wording?
So, the alternative would be, for curricular activities, so you're coming in to come into the school to partake in the curricular activities of the school, and you follow those guidelines. You don't get to pick and choose, you know, I'm not coming in on Tuesdays, but I'm only going to come in on Monday and Thursday and skip one of the days, no. If you're going to come in to participate in the classes, you live to the rules of the classes.
How does that solve the everyday math problem?
You wouldn't be sending your kid into their everyday math curriculum if you didn't believe in that. But you might not know physics or calculus.
How does your phrasing solve the problem?
Because if it's, because extracurricular, I have the second statement would be, if you're participating in extracurricular, you just have to follow the behavioral guidelines.
Okay.
Not the curriculum guidelines.
So, you're saying that if you're going to participate in the curriculum, you have to follow the curriculum?
If you're coming in for a curriculum course, you have to follow what that curriculum is for the school.
Right.
They're not going to change it for you to come in and participate in their classes. But you shouldn't have to be following the school's curriculum in order to access sports activity, is the point I'm trying to make.
I want Mr. Dawson, I'd like Mr. Dawson to just speak to, because he shared the feedback that I gave you, Jamie.
Sure, two thoughts. One, on their curricular piece, the concern, the first concern that pops in my head about wording it that way is, there are state laws that put some of the control of a curriculum piece already on the parents. For instance, we're going to read, "The Hate U Give," which is a sophomore book the kids just swallow at whole. They love it. The language is a little choice. I could see a parent protesting that. Look, if they do, they have the right to ask us to insert an alternative text. I would be worried that that language would, could limit us and run afoul of that particular law. Just as a quick thought, without giving it a whole lot of thoughts, the goal of the language that we inserted in there was to use words like guidelines and to give us the flexibility. There's certainly not a thought there that a kid can't take a religious class at home or anything like that and then access our physics curriculum. Typically, when kids come in as homeschool students, and I'm a homeschool parent, by the way, those students are accessing your academic curriculum for high-level coursework. Orchestra, languages, AP Physics, maybe the whole, you know, shooting match in math because the parents, you know, a lot of, these kids are doing homeschool groups and things like that. So, the idea was just to say the guidelines as you spoke to. We don't want a student showing up, let's say, one day a week, or, as I've seen with certain schools in the area, several that I've worked at, students will come in and they're playing, let's say, junior hockey, but they, they're from Sweden, and they're living with a parent, and guess what? You get to educate this child who's technically homeschooled, or they want to access your school, but they only show up one day a week. And that just doesn't work for you. So, you want to have some flexibility to say, "You've got to follow the guidelines." That was the intention of what we're doing there. From the co-curricular piece, my concern about trimming back would be a student who is a homeschool student, and we would want to hold them to the same things as far as behavior. If a student were caught, say, at an underage drinking party, there's a procedure in the handbook for athletes that would allow us to suspend that student from athletics because of safety issues. Those have been widely upheld by the courts to say that you wouldn't participate from an athletic event due to being either drinking or in the presence, knowingly in the presence of alcohol and things like that. So, the goal of the language that's in there now was to let us, we could say to a parent, "All right, you want to access, great, you've got every right for your kid to be, you know, in the Spanish club or whatever they want to do." And the law backs that up, New Hampshire law in particular backs that up. But also to say, "All right, but the guidelines for that participation in that activity do apply to your student as well." And we all felt that was a glaring miss in the current policy, because it didn't define how the students had to act in there.
If I might.
Sure.
So, one of my options was to say that for co-curricular activities, you must follow behavioral guidelines. My only concern was for co-curricular to also have to follow the academic guidelines.
My preference, okay, in these policies across the board is to be a little less specific, because what's a behavioral guideline? Okay? Does that mean the player, you know, the parent can say, "Well, my student has to play this number, that number of minutes in a game," or "They should be in the roster," or "They have to go to the competition," okay?
Those are the words that were inserted, behavioral guidelines.
Right, and I would say guidelines gives us, us the ability at the school level to make a decision about what those guidelines are going to be as conditions change and as things come up from those certain student athletes or students.
But I didn't, I didn't change any of those words for co-curriculars. I just said, for co-curriculars, academic guidelines wouldn't apply for co-curriculars. Academic guidelines would apply for curricular. Academic and behavioral guidelines would apply for curricular. Behavioral guidelines would apply for co-curricular.
I think, I think Bob's just saying that, that he would feel more comfortable from a practice standpoint, because he's on the front line of this. What I hear Bob saying is that he's, he's fine with your point, he's saying, "Could we just say guidelines?" Because there may be behavioral, usually athletics would have behavioral guidelines.
Right.
But, but I think he'd like it to just be a little bit wider, which I think is a good idea, I would support him in that.
Yep.
Because guidelines might be, it might not be a behavior.
I didn't change the word guidelines.
No, I know you didn't, I think he's, he's just trying to clarify through this process that, you know...
I think it's hard to do that when he hasn't got it in front of him.
Right, right.
Am I right?
I looked for it, I couldn't find it. I brought everything else, it's missing. The other thing, and I just sort of looked at Vicki, student athletes in the NHIA, even homeschool students have to meet the same academic guidelines that our present students do. So, we would be looking to them, for them to be passing in the most recent marking period for courses in that. Now, obviously, with a homeschool student, their, their programs can be all over the place, and that might include a religion class, by the way. Those kind of guidelines would be in there as well. So, they would actually be asked to have the same academic and behavioral guidelines for co-curricular activities. That would be something I think we would expect. It's not my party, you guys.
You said that you're a homeschool parent.
Yep.
Does your district have these kind of policy specifications for your children participating in the district?
My kids are just graduated from college and are going to make me a grandfather, so we're beyond that. The district that we were in, I, we didn't choose to access those things, sort of driver's ed, but I think that was, I actually think that was a city-run thing in Manchester at the time. But a lot of this stuff is governed by state law, where there were questions, can a student athlete who's a wrestler, who lives in the Timberlane District, and I'm going back to my, you know, past when I was in that district, that they have a right to wrestle for them? And the answer is yes, they do. I had a rather forcible conversation with a band director in a district once who didn't want to allow their student to participate in Allstate because they were a homeschool student and the school would not sponsor them to be in Allstate, which I vehemently disagreed with. I thought that was a violation of that kid's legal rights to access the same program as the students in school. It was, in effect, a New Hampshire music educator saying, "You can't be in Allstate because you're a homeschool kid." Okay?
So, that, yeah.
The parents of the child chose not to pursue that, I thought they should have. And I am absolutely certain they would have won.
I just, I would be happy with tabling this until August and talking about it more, but I want to say that, the academic and behavioral guidelines, Vicki, tell me if I'm wrong on this, but my feeling on that one is, there are academic expectations if you're participating in extracurricular activities in terms of your grades.
Yep, understood that.
If you don't keep them up, you can't participate. And I think that, I just had to switch gears to policy mode, that, that the academic guidelines aren't, they do apply, and we don't want to limit the school's ability. What I don't want is for a homeschool kid to be able to participate if they're failing when someone else wouldn't be able to in the school.
And I agree with that too, so.
Yep, so that's...
I think we're all trying to achieve the same thing, I'm just concerned that the verbiage as it exists could be prejudicial to somebody who's trying to access sports if a different group of administrators happen to be.
Sure, well, I, it is an NHSBA-recommended policy, and I think that they put a lot of time into this.
But this we added to their policy.
Yeah, okay, so I...
Yep.
So, you want to table it, or do you want to kind of wrap this up? What do you guys think?
Changed it to the following, "Will be expected to adhere to the academic requirements outlined in RSA 193A," which I assume outlines the minimum curriculum requirements for homeschooling. That's, 193A is home education. Is that where we'd find the academic guidelines?
No, that wouldn't work, because we, we might have a higher standard than the, that's a great idea, but...
Anyway, I don't want to cause a big stink, but that's one...
No, I understand, I completely understand.
It's okay, Jamie, that's what we're here for.
The word "same" is a little bit like...
Why don't we pull that one out and move on?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we do that? I think it's a good idea, we've got 40 policies.
Anything else that you'd like to discuss? I know you sent some...
No, I've been a panting neck for enough.
No, really, it's fine. We'll bring this up at the first meeting in August, and maybe you and Bob could work on some language, and we'll get it worked out.
So, we'll table Triple J, anything else? And what about the EEA? Are we going to table that one?
No, I got, I think I got it.
Okay, go for it.
All right, so I'll read it to you. But that's not in the motion, let's do the motion and then have a motion on EEA.
Okay, move to approve as amended. The policies I mentioned.
Yeah, second.
Outlined, listed.
Well, we already have...
Move the vote.
We have a motion in second.
Move the vote.
We're okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
I need to tally once. Yeah, yes, that's unanimous. Ah, see you at the end of the year. Okay.
So, could we have a motion in a second on EEA, and then I can share the language?
So moved.
Second?
Do we have one?
Thank you, Jamie. This is what I'm thinking that it should say, feel free to, this is just a, all right, here we go.
Go ahead.
"Kindergarten through Grade Three students will not be discharged from school unless..."
Grade Three?
I changed it to three because of Tammy's, Tammy? I changed it to Grade Three?
Come on, guys.
Sorry, I'm just looking to sit, looking for this in the folder, I didn't see it.
That's okay. All right, so kindergarten through Grade Three students will not be discharged from school unless a parent, guardian, or known adult is present to pick them up at the designated bus stop or at the school building or after-school event. Parents or guardians may opt out of the bus stop component of this policy in writing to the school principal. Parents or guardians may opt out of the school building or after-school event component of this policy in writing to the school principal, provided that the student is walking a reasonable distance from the school, not to exceed a quarter-mile.
I, I don't know, Grade Three, that's...
You want to go to four?
It's about eight years old.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just sitting there saying, some kids...
I'd go to the five, because that's what exists for the next year.
Fine, parents can opt out anyway, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
All right.
Go to five.
Okay, well...
Yeah.
All right, so now I amended it to read five. And I think that will cover us, and if we need to adjust it again, we can. I just want to start school off on the right foot with the handbooks congruent.
And this would be appropriate for this coming September.
It would be, yeah, we won't start it tomorrow or anything.
I'm more comfortable on eight, nine, age-wise.
Yeah.
It's about Grade Three or Four.
All right.
So, move to approve as amended. By the superintendent, move to approve as amended.
That's second, yeah, it's moved and seconded, so all in favor?
Thank you, everyone.
I know we're in a rush, but I...
You already have it.
I got people on both sides of me talking.
I'm helping you all.
Thank you. Between you and Pam, I might be able to do it right tonight. Okay. Okay, all right, so, we're happy with that. Okay, intervention job description.
Yeah, I had a great question from, so, I don't want to go too fast, because I know when I'm trying to, okay, but I'll be as quick as I can, Ellie.
It's on the radio.
Jim called me up and said he was concerned about the word, Jim? Jim called me up and said he was concerned about the word, Jim?
Access.
Access. I explained to Jim that what access means in this context, it is as you speak for educators. And what access means is that the goal of the interventionist is to get the, the student up to speed as quickly as possible and get them back into the regular classroom. Teacher, this job, the audience, the job description, audience, is teachers. It's designed when they apply for the job to understand what their job will be. I spoke to Dr. Haynes at length, and she felt that it should stay access, but that I should explain that at the board meeting tonight. So when you read the word access to the regular ed curriculum, the goal is to help the kid learn whatever they're struggling with and then get them back into the regular curriculum.
Yeah, and my interpretation of it was it took the intervention teacher and removed them by one step from actually teaching.
Right.
Because instead of teaching, they're gonna be providing access.
Right.
But I appreciate your explanation.
No problem.
You say approval for intervention, that we need a motion on this?
I do need, it's a job description, I just need a motion to approve the job description.
Okay, so, okay, so it's a motion to approve a job, okay, yeah, okay.
Move to approve?
Yeah.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, old business, we got school board goals, Tom.
Um, I'm actually gonna turn this over to Pam because she had sent me some, a draft of a couple of goals that she wanted to share with the board, and I think that she, she, I'm gonna let, let.
Are you talking about the self-evaluation or the?
No, I'm talking about the two goals that you emailed me about, the first one being, uh, goal number one being successfully implementing the transition of K, K three, four, five, six, and seven, eight.
That's right, that's my goal.
That's a huge goal, right? And then the second goal, Pam, or the third goal that you had sent to me, Pam, the second one, we kind of.
Sure, I'll find it.
And anyone else who had goals, ideas, I mean, it's an open discussion, I just, I try to give you something to respond to, to, to keep the meeting moving.
I've got three.
Yep.
Well, okay, how, how many are, how many are dual, would you, well, it depends on what they have.
Well, I mean, the, I have to tell you, that first goal is big.
I was just gonna say, that's, that's what I was.
Yeah, there, that's what Pam had emailed to me, and I told her that I felt that from a capacity standpoint, convening a five-year strategic plan process is not possible next year effectively. We need to focus on moving successfully K three, four, five, six, and seven to twelve. That is a giant goal, right? That really is three goals in one goal. So I, I certainly want you to know from an administrative capacity, we can't, I would encourage the board to begin the strategic planning process in the fall of 2020, once the schools are moved. But I think it's good to make it public that we're talking about that and that we think it's very, very important.
My thought was in late spring, announce we're forming a task force and alert stakeholders to the need for members, nothing more than that.
Kind of like I did the other day with the committees for the buildings.
Right.
Yep.
So it wouldn't be that they do any work, they just need to begin identifying the members and.
Well, I don't think we need to make that a goal, though, right?
Yeah, but I wanted to have more than one goal, so I put those two on there.
Well, I think the accreditation, the accreditation planning does need to happen in terms of time. We need to begin that process, so I, I do want you to know that from, from my perspective, I need to do that regardless. The accreditation work needs to happen because we've kind of been, NASDAQ's been great, I mean, uh, the New England Accreditation Group has been good with us, they know that we're reorganizing the district. I certainly, those were the two goals that were shared with me prior to this meeting that I thought would be good.
Jim, you got a couple?
Yeah. The first one is implement the alternative plan for facilities reconfiguration and academic innovation intervention unanimously approved by the school board on June 5th. Number two is instruction, and it's three parts to it. Work with the superintendent to evaluate academic curriculum and set outcome goals. Work with the, and that's part A. Part B, work with the administration to develop and tie the strategic plan to measurable academic improvement in goals, or if you don't want to put strategic plan, we could say the academic intervention, to measurable academic improvement in goals. And at least two times a year, host an administration report on the progress of achieving those measures and goals. And part C is compare yearly academic performance and improve San Warren's results in relation to state of New Hampshire reported averages. The goal is to continually evaluate success of the curriculum with regard to our students demonstrating mastery of academic content. A comparison against statewide performance will help us, help us measure this. And then my third one is budget. To the extent possible, manage costs to reduce the school portion of the 2020-21 property taxes.
I had a couple.
I, I, I like the performance one, but I'm wondering if we're a year early.
Why are we discussing this at this point? Aren't we gonna have a meeting just on deciding goals? Is this, are we gonna set goals?
Yeah, this was our goals meeting.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, it was on the agenda for today because we put it off until the board made a decision. By policy, we're supposed to do it in May. We did discuss it at a meeting, that we would hold off until the board made a decision on the reconfiguration.
This is, all of these.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can do it, it, I'm, I'm thinking, you know, one of those things when you're thinking about these things now.
But this, this is about developing it, not actually doing it.
Yep.
Right, it's, it's part of, I mean, that whole thing has to be developed as part of this whole plan.
No, we should always know how we're doing.
I heard what Jamie had to say, I just wanted to hear Jamie's.
Yeah, I had some.
Oh, I thought we were gonna discuss his and then go to, we discussed Pam's.
Sure.
And we discussed Jim's, and now we'll discuss Jamie's. What you got, Jamie?
Mine, mine are similar, we'd kind of dovetail in.
I don't have anything more to say unless I'm asked to.
So, uh, I had, again, the same for the first item. That's obviously the biggest and the most important, is to successfully implement. I had to review and implement new report card system and time for implementation for the, uh.
I like that one.
For the new school organization, so that we'd start that organization with the new report cards, so parents know how they're gonna be finding out about how their kids are progressing, and that happens at the same time with the organizational change. And then on the budgetary side, prepare a budget for 2021 school year with the target not to exceed the default budget.
If I can, I, I also, I mean, I just, this, this report card system, I, I, I would guess out of ten parents I talked to, four or five are, you know, what, what is, what, what the heck does that mean? I, I think, what, what I'm, what I'm thinking is the superintendent would give us a number of options that we would choose.
Well, I, I know the excellent student achievement is working on a task force to look at.
Types of.
Reporting anyways, so it would seem to me that we just give that the impetus of saying that, that would be a goal, to try to have that ready for the, the start of the new process. Because parents are gonna be very concerned with all the changes that we've made, and frankly, the current system does not provide the information necessary for a parent to assess what's situation with their kid. How is my kid doing? Is he mastering the, the information, is he not? How is my kid doing against their peers if all of them aren't mastering it? Well, that's something that I'd like to know too. And, and Tom and I have talked about these, and how, how can I, as a parent, assist my child to be able to get to the next step? But the first part is, you have to know how they're doing. And, and our current system, in my opinion, doesn't provide that.
To just say proficient, proficient here or proficient here? Not proficient is here to here? Where is it? What is it? I don't know. You know, I will tell you, though, in all honesty, Mr. Stack, in particular, because we had a discussion on this, has worked, I don't know if it's called tirelessly, but he has put out lots and lots and lots and lots of information to the parents, but for some reason, it wasn't picked up. I'm gonna say the parent kind of didn't bend down to pick it up because he did a yeoman's job on trying to explain this whole proficient, you know, but.
But explain.
Kids, people, you know, it, it just didn't work.
I'm, I'm sure Brian did do that because.
Oh, he did.
Very, by the same token, doesn't mean the parents liked it.
Exactly.
And that's different than, they might have gotten it, but they didn't like it.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think that's systemic.
Well, I, I've, I've talked to parents that would say, I under, so there's a group of parents, like you said, half of them say, "I have no idea what this is telling me, I, I've given up trying to figure it out." There's others that'll say, "I know exactly how it works," and they'll explain it to you. And it'll be different than the, the next person that tells you, "I know exactly how it works," and they explain it to you, and they explain it different. And the third person explains it different yet.
And I've had them explain it, be aptly correct, and then say, "And I hate it."
So can I, can I just simply say that I did poll the community members at our hearing in May, remember?
Yep.
I asked them to raise their hand, how many people feel comfortable with the reporting system? I just, they're all there captive, I figured I might as well just get a little test, and it was interesting because I expected it to be like the majority of people raising their hand saying, "I don't like it," and they didn't. It was really fifty-fifty, or, or maybe even a little bit less, I didn't count. But I want to make sure that you understand that, that Jamie, from my perspective philosophically, Jamie, you pretty much mirrored exactly what I've been saying since I got here as a principal and as a father. I wanted to know the things that you just outlined, and what we did was we had a, a scoring system, but there was a narrative. What you're outlining is more congruent with elementary report, reporting, grades K through eight. High school reporting's a little different, but we're looking at the whole thing. And I did also want to mention that Ellie had asked the board at the last meeting to consider a facilities goal, which was to actively engage, um, uh, the facilities committee, the community, and realtors to try to figure out a solution for the middle school and the seminary building. I, 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 I'll just say as a superintendent in terms of the district's capacity, because this is a board goal, it's not the administration's goal, it's your goal, but it kind of ends up being our goal. Do you know what I'm saying? So I do feel like I need to, yeah, and it's in my job description, it says, "I'm supposed to advise you on, on your goals," right? I'm supposed to advise you in this process. So, um, I would agree completely that the move is critical. I would say that the report cards are a wonderful idea, and Jim, I think that your idea would be the next year, right? The idea of the mapping, that would be part of the strategic planning process around the academics. That doesn't mean that we aren't going to continue looking at data this year.
Report on the performance?
Yeah, we should be reporting on the performance twice a year anyway. The way I did the other night, that should be done twice annually, once in the fall and once in the spring. Let me just finish, Jim.
Yeah.
And then the budget, I would agree that, that we are going to work toward a default, whether or not that's a board goal. Um, I think it would be, I, I don't want to give the community the message that you have decided on a budget when we haven't gone through the process, so just let me share that, this with you. The process is supposed to be that the administrators get together, they talk to their staff, the staff has input, they put together a budget, and then I review their recommendations and add, cut, delete, work with Matt to do that, right? Then I present you the superintendent's proposed budget. If you set a goal right now of what that's going to be, which, I'm not saying I have a problem with it, but I don't want that to start being a habit, right? You then have to decide what you're comfortable sending to the budget committee and the community. That becomes the school board's proposed budget. Then the Budcom and the board go back and forth, and it's decided on. So if we say that our goal is to keep it at the default, which frankly, that is my goal, I just don't know that that should be a practice that we start as a, as a, it kind of circumvents the whole budget process to do that as a formal school board goal. So I, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable supporting that, but it doesn't mean, I understand where you're coming from, and I think it's a reasonable thing to work toward. The facilities goal, I think, is a fantastic idea, because it will keep the, the, remember that, that every day when I go to work, I ask myself, "What are the school board's goals?" And then I ask myself, "What, what am I doing today that's gonna get that completed for this year?" Right? That three hundred and eighty policies was no easy task. I mean, there were many days when I could have been doing three other things, and we did that to get it done, right? So I have to make decisions, and then when you say to me, "Well, why didn't that get done?" I'll say to you, "Well, we, I did your goal." Right? So you, you gotta, there's balance in the whole thing. So certainly from my perspective, I think that the move is a big enough goal, period, right? But the report cards in the facilities would be logical, reasonable goals for the school board this year. The budget is a process that we do annually, right? I just want to be very careful about limiting the budget process and circumventing the process.
We're talking about moving the kids in two thousand twenty-one.
No, two thousand twenty.
Twenty.
September of two thousand twenty.
So not this coming September, next September.
Everything has to be completely planned by the end of this year.
Which includes, and, and including the intervention.
Well, some of it, because remember, the costs get offset, and it's a two-year implementation of all the intervention, right?
I think simultaneously with that, the evaluations should be developed as well, because you're gonna want to be able to, as you go along, determine what, how the interventions are working, and.
Okay, I see.
In places that they're not working, you're gonna want to be able to get right on that.
We already have that done.
Okay.
I don't think that's a goal.
Okay.
The, the, the goal is to get the kids to move as far as possible from where we started from.
Okay.
A month ago, when I presented all that academic data, we already have the assessments in place. What I want to see is that there's a strategic plan development that ties specific increments of growth in the resources in the district, because there'll be a point when the reorganization is done where we have to actually start, we really did two years of budgeting in one year, right? Because the reality is that, excuse me, the budget for the next couple of years has been kind of planned out through the reorganization. So Jim, I would say that we already have those indicators figured out. That isn't something that, I could present that next week.
Okay.
Yeah.
As far as the default budget goes, the default budget is going to have the two thousand twenty, twenty-one professional salary increase and, uh, support staff increase and whatever the administrative contract ends up being.
Yes.
So that's already gonna be up.
Provided that that's approved.
Right.
By, at the polls.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's, but that's, the, the, the professional staff and the support staff has already been approved.
Mm-hmm.
So that default is already gonna be six hundred plus.
Probably five hundred, but yes.
Higher. Well, it was five hundred something for the professional and almost an eighty-something for the, yeah.
Depends on turnover, and those are all estimates, but yes.
So that's about a six hundred thousand dollar increase above our current budget.
Again, I would say closer to five hundred, but yes.
All right.
Yes.
So tonight, we approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, for the middle school configure, reconfiguration, and we're holding back another five hundred. So my goal, as far as budget goes, would be not to meet this default budget, but if we're gonna reduce the tax rate, which we've, we've, we've heard as a goal, would, is to do much better than that.
I don't think we want to reduce it as much as we want to level.
That's what we've, that's been talked about.
I guess that would be reducing, I mean, what's reducing?
Again, this isn't, we're not, it's not a budget meeting tonight.
I'm just telling you what my.
I just want to be clear that I'm not gonna be able to bring forward a budget that's less than the default budget, because I'm not comfortable with the amount of physical, I want to go public on record, that I'm comfortable with working toward a default budget, but it's really important to understand that the, the voters voted in those teachers' contracts. They have say in that. And as far as the.
And I'm not saying take them out.
Right, but, but I can't reduce, until the middle school, elementary school move is complete, I am not comfortable with reducing the budget, because I don't know what's gonna come up. That process of that money that you held back is a legitimate thing, but that will go back to the taxpayers if we don't send it, spend it, right? At the end of the next fiscal year. So I just want to be clear with everyone that, that I, my intention is to bring forward the default budget.
And I, I would not want to give a really negative message to our community.
Right.
And to our staff, that all we care about is cutting costs. I, I think, and, and I'm not saying that we don't want to cut costs, of course you don't want to spend money unnecessarily. By the same token, when we build a budget, you need to build a budget. And if we can't live with the bottom line, then we're gonna have to make some reductions because we have certain goals or projections that we want to accomplish, projects that we want to accomplish. But to say right from the get-go, "We're gonna cut another million dollars out," it's not a good way to operate. I want a positive feeling, we have a major task in front of us, and I want everyone to, to jump on board to help. It's important. So if we're saying we're gonna slash and burn, I don't want to, I don't want to go down like.
I don't think I said those words at all.
Well, that's what I heard.
Well, and you weren't listening.
I don't know about that, I usually listen to.
What I heard was, you know, the budget, but you know, to me, default budget's set by formula. We could pretty much come up with a default budget today, because it's last year's budget, plus, minus, by formula, by the state. plus minus by formula by the state.
Right.
End of subject. But I don't want to be in a situation where, A, people are saying you want to default even though we need this. Anytime I've ever put a budget together is you go to your people, your people submit to you, you submit to us, and then we deal with it. We don't sit there and say, you know what? This is what you got, so don't come with us with anything more. Because you could come with something more, and every one of us say, that absolutely has to be. Or conversely, you could come to us with something and say, no way. That's the process. It's been going on for years, and that's the process it should be. To tie us to go on record that we don't want to go over the default, we don't know what tomorrow's going to bring. There could be something happen or some program that all of a sudden, it's better than sliced bread, and we want to do it. So, I don't want to, I don't want to go on record and telling the people out there, guess what, folks, we're going to default no matter what. And that's what they're going to hear. Just like, I agree what you said versus what we heard and what we want to hear and all the filtering systems, I would stay away from a goal of default budget. It's too fluid right now.
I plan to stay away from that goal.
Okay.
Well, yeah, but he wants it to be below the default. Don't let him fool you.
Yeah. No, no. It could well be that. You're absolutely correct.
And everyone would be happy with that.
That's right. Yes, everybody would be happy with that.
That's not the right way to go.
But I don't think we need to go on record for it.
My point for having a role in there was, I've done 30 years' worth of budgets, and sometimes you have big years and sometimes you don't have big years. Sometimes you've got a lot going on, sometimes you don't have a lot going on. There's no sense, in my mind, setting a goal, saying, the target, I use the word "the target," not the absolute limit.
Yep.
The target is the default budget. To be clear that this isn't a time to come in in the midst of everything that'll be going on and saying, you know what? I've come up with some great ideas. I need 15% more than last year.
Right, right.
So, if you have those great ideas and you think they're worthwhile and you want to come and push those, well, okay, you're not prevented from doing that, but you know coming in, that's an uphill battle.
Right.
It would be under any circumstance.
Well, correct.
Hey, Jamie, we asked for $260,000 more last year. We lost it by 10 votes.
Yep.
That's less than, is that less than 1%?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's less than 1% by almost 100 grand. I don't plan on asking for a whole lot more when we're reducing a whole facility. I expect us to save something. I want that amount of money to go back at the end when it's actually a savings, not before it actually happens.
I don't, I don't think we're saying different things.
No, I think we're saying the exact same thing.
Different, yeah, different means.
No, we're saying the same thing.
You're saying the same thing.
We're saying the same thing, yeah.
Anybody else?
I drafted a self-evaluation, which is now required of the board, which I just circulated. I just stated our three goals from last year, this current year, and stated that we completed 100% of the first one, which was a review, get the NESDEC study done, and come up with a recommendation for best use of the facilities to support student success. That goal is completed. The comprehensive review of policies has been completed and set measures. This is Jim's recommendation, is to map outcomes to programs, to resource use. Now, I put 80% completed, well, really 50% when you think about, we have the data we're working on in EISA, and we need to map it into a timeline for growth in outcomes.
Well, yeah, but we had, didn't we have 80, almost not, what did they report out in ISAC?
Can I just, I'm confused here, folks, I'm sorry.
This is our, this is our self-evaluation, which is required along with...
No, I understand that, but I thought we were still on school board goals, and we were going to set the school board goal.
Well, what I'm getting to is, our third goal isn't completed.
Okay, okay.
It's in progress.
Well, we've still got time to complete it, am I correct?
Right, so we can continue with that goal in this coming year.
Okay, okay.
We've got a lot done.
I get where you're coming from.
We've got a lot of test scores we've looked at, so we need to map resources we're now allocating to early intervention, to the test scores, and then have a timeline and all expected outcomes.
Why don't we make the goal for, to have the ISAC committee make a new report card and set a five-year plan for the academic intervention program that will be implemented in 2020? That's fine, we're going to do it anyway.
Okay, I gotta...
What was that?
You know where I have a problem with the subcommittee doing it? The report card, they're not the professionals. We're school board members.
Thank you.
I would like to see the professionals come up with something. ISAC can certainly put in a recommendation.
Right.
But, but I don't know if I'm qualified, and I was a teacher, to come up with what a report card should look like.
So, I just want to mention, we did have a report from Dr. Haynes in our IAC committee meeting earlier this afternoon where she did say that the district is actually working with a new company. There are some meetings that are going to be happening over the summer, and she was going to give us some more information in September.
Right.
So, I don't think anyone expects us as a committee to come up with that information, but we certainly will work with Dr. Haynes and get the information from her and report on the progress. That seems reasonable.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, so I think the professionals should, should...
Does that make sense?
Thanks, yeah, yeah. No, you said it better than I did, thank you.
All right. So, I just want to see if we get... Reconfiguration is one, I thought you were done, I'm sorry. I was going to put yours in later to complete that.
But I'm only showing you the self-evaluation as, because that third goal is still in progress.
Right.
That could be a continued goal for this coming year, along with the reorganization one, which I just showed you over here. This, the first one here, implementation of reorganization of... And then the third one could be, complete a study of our report card system. That could be the third goal.
Okay, well, okay.
And then we should, if we're going to do...
I think that facilities one's a good one, too. Right in the mix.
Can I just, just, I'm sorry to overrule you for a second, but I've got reconfiguration.
I think we'd all agree with that.
Report on performance, facilities.
Yep.
Report card, and complete this.
Let's, let's narrow it down to three.
That's fine, but I'm just saying, it seems like we seem to be all in, I'm just coming up with what I'm perceiving as all agreement.
When you say "complete this," what are you talking about?
Number three, on this list here.
Number three. Well, mine can be rolled into...
This sheet that she gave us, this is the third one that we haven't completed.
Mine can be rolled into number three.
Right.
Jim's second one is basically the same, is very similar to number three up there.
Yeah.
Okay, so that would be, take the report cards and roll it into here.
No, mine's not the report card.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yours isn't the report, yours is the performance.
Right.
Right. So, I would just say that I would love to hear someone make a motion, because I can't, that we, the move is one goal.
With reconfiguration.
The academic report cards and indicators is a second goal, and the third goal is the facilities process that Ellie outlined at the last meeting, by which we look at and deeply explore. The specific goal would be to put on the ballot something to move the two buildings forward. That's the goal. It doesn't mean we're going to meet it, but we're going to try by working with the community and realtors and really actively get on that next year. As a superintendent, I can get those done.
So, the middle school and the seminary building?
The middle school and the seminary building would be in the facilities goal.
Yep.
The academic goals would be to rectify the report card issues and talk about mapping out the indicators that we want to use, this, the continuation of that other...
Where the report cards thrown in?
Yeah, the two things. Because I think, look, the report card has to happen.
I think so, too.
I don't, I don't even like the report card, and I'm running the place.
I think my bias is fairly well-known.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But no one's disagreeing with you.
No.
Okay, so now you're down to three, am I correct?
We're down to three goals. The move...
Reconfig.
Yep.
Academic is the report cards.
And, and the, and the...
The reports indicators.
Yeah, we're going to...
Middle school and high school.
Yeah, but the...
So moved.
There was one, he missed one thing. The academic goals are the report cards and continuing our goal three from this year.
Yes.
There are two parts.
Goal three with, with report card.
Right, both things.
Revisions.
Could I suggest that...
What do you want to call number three? What do you actually want to call it?
Getting rid of facilities we don't need?
No, 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 no. Not number three there. Pam's number three, that we've only completed 80%.
I just will write...
Give it a word.
That was, that's what I was going to suggest is...
Academic indicators.
We've given the highlights, and then maybe we have Policy who's used to writing these or some group that says, can you put these into words for confirmation later so that these would be the actual goals?
Well, what I'm going to do is, is if you can give me a word for what you want to call that, the 80%, complete, complete?
Complete 2018, '19 goal three.
And add report cards.
And add the report cards. Don't worry, Jamie, I'm going to do it. You got it. In fact, I'm going to put you on the committee to do that. How's that?
And review report cards? I'm trying to come up with something simple for you, fellas. And, and what?
Explore, explore other report card options.
I vote yes, I'll be right back.
Thanks, Jim.
I wrote, complete study of report card system.
Well, how about explore report card options?
Right.
That's fine.
Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion. The motion's going to be for the goals to be, one, reconfiguration of grades 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and the move to the high school of 7 and 8. Is there anything else we need to add in there?
No.
Okay. Two, to, to, to work on facilities, to...
Formulate task force.
Formulate a task force for facilities, specifically...
Expedite elimination of unnecessary properties and buildings.
Okay, okay, two, two, yeah.
But we have an editor around.
Expedite the, expedite the removal...
Transfer.
The removal of unnecessary excess properties.
And buildings.
And buildings.
Sale.
Specifically, middle school, old high school campus. I'm going to say the campus. That'd have to be the whole campus, it could be bonded in.
Yeah, 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 we get it.
Okay, all right, so that gets the facilities, that gets the reconfiguration. To complete the 2000 goal three and explore report card options. Okay, that would be number three?
Yes.
Okay, you got those okay, fellas?
The last one was, I thought it was academics, and then it goes into...
Well, it's under academics, but, but I didn't give, yeah. All right, complete 2000 goal threes and explore options. So, that, is everybody comfortable with the wording of that motion?
I just add that all of those are real big.
We may not meet them all, but we can try.
Yeah, but, so let's give me a motion, a second on my motion.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Kind of got it backwards, but that's okay, we didn't know what the motion was going to be like. Okay, move the motion? All in favor? Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
Don't blame me if these are wrong, worded wrong, you all agree with it.
I'd like to move that we approve my self-evaluation draft.
Yep.
I list what we've completed, other completed items.
Oh, 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 okay, I get what you're saying. Okay, I didn't know what you were just saying.
It's a separate document, other completed items and also incomplete items. I listed the seminary building, so...
We got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Could I just say that next...
No, we're getting out of here.
I know, but next year, listen, listen, next year, when we do goal setting, will you please email me your ideas for goals in advance because I'm supposed to facilitate that, and the only one who did was Pam. I did ask for that at the last meeting, and it's okay, I'm not upset or anything, but it would be easier for me to sit down and draft this and call you and talk to you and get it roughed out, put it up on the projector, and then we can just do it. I thought Pam was the only one who had sent thoughts, it's no problem, but it would have gone much quicker.
Okay, so school board dates. Everybody else is doing everybody else's job. Supposed to be you, but these are what they are. These obviously can be changed as the chairs of the committee might need to change.
Wait, 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 like point of order?
No, we're looking at, we're looking at the subcommittee.
This is school board dates. This one is school board dates.
It's school board dates.
School board dates, sorry, yeah.
Yep, thanks.
This is a mirror image of the last two years, am I correct?
Yeah, they both are.
Move to approve.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Wait, 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 I need a, a motion on this.
I just did.
Move to a second.
Second.
Now we can discuss. Go for it, Jamie.
So, this is a calendar thing I was going to mention.
Yep, yep.
About four days ago, it seems.
Yep.
So, there was a comment about doing it at the beginning of August, and there's comment about can we go to the second week of August as opposed to the first week of August?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, I think you're talking about...
No, he is, he's right.
Yeah, okay. School board meeting, yes, okay.
So, right now, per this, it's the 21st, that's the first one. And there's discussion about having one at the first week of August, which I can support that one personally. I'd just point out at the second week of August, as I talked to you about, as to when are these, based upon the plan at the time, I've just made arrangements that I can't get out of now. That takes me out the second week.
Yeah, so you know what? Let's go with this one down here. If the superintendent says we don't need to meet earlier than that, and he's already planned a week out with all his administrative team the first week, you're gone the second. It's not fair to you to change the calendar when we... Let's go with this one.
Go to the 21st?
If we need a meeting this summer, I'm going to let you know.
We need a meeting, Matt Angles is doing.
We're going to call you.
Matt? Am I correct?
He could.
Because, because that's what Michelle used to do.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt this calendar.
Perfect. I think we already had that.
She already had a motion.
But that's okay.
Oh, you did?
Yep, we're good.
Okay.
But again, if we need a meeting, I'll call one.
Right.
Right?
If something comes up and it's necessary, then absolutely.
Yes, exactly.
I'll take care of it, Mr. Chairman, don't worry about it. We're going to the 21st. Well, if something happens, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Trying to get out of here, Ellie. Okay.
You're failing because you still have the non-public session.
No, that's going to be quick, trust me.
Okay, so that, take care of that. Do you think this is easy? You've got three pages here tonight. Okay, school board subcommittee dates.
I got it down to one and a half.
I just, I'll tell you this because I created it, it's exactly what we've always done at the same times for the last two years. The subcommittees fall on the same nights in the same, roughly the same order. The facilities and finance moved a little bit earlier again because there were members who were on both committees. And I put the two committees that are only needed occasionally on the off week that can meet or not meet, and I put the asterisk saying, in case the public reads it, that those may or may not meet as needed.
And any chairman can call for if needed.